This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Bright.
Here.
Mr. Love.
Present.
Mr. Fuller.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Present.
Dr. Petrola. Ms. Janey.
Here.
And Mr. Wainwright.
Here.
Also, it looks like Solicitor Barry is on the line. Mayor Wilson is here. Is our junior council, uh, council member here? Yes, I see Ben is on the line as well, and Chief Payne has joined us too.
Uh, I'm here too. I just got on.
And Dr. Petrola. Okay, sir. Thank you.
All right. All right, I'm gonna skip past the pledge of allegiance and go straight to the mayor's proclamation.
All right, Borough of Edgewood Proclamation twenty twenty one dash oh one. Whereas Richard Hess Hastings Keller was born on May twenty ninth nineteen forty nine and died December eighteenth twenty twenty in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And whereas Mr. Keller graduated from the Carnegie Mellon University School of Architecture specializing in public housing and apartments and condo design. And whereas Mr. Keller ran a successful architecture practice in Edgewood Borough for over thirty years. And whereas Mr. Keller served for many years as member of the Edgewood Borough Planning Commission and Recreation Department. And whereas Mr. Keller was instrumental in construction of the Edgewood Borough Marquee located in the entrance of the Borough Building. And whereas Mr. Keller devoted many hours volunteering with his coaching Edgewood Youth, Base School, and Edgewood High Schools. Now therefore, on this day, on this first day of February two thousand twenty one, the Office of the Mayor of the Borough of Edgewood, in partnership with the Borough Council, honors the life and service of Richard H. Keller and his numerous personnel and professional accomplishments as an Edgewood resident and proclaims Friday, February fifth, two thousand twenty one, as Richard Keller Day. Reclaimed at the meeting of the Council of the Borough of Edgewood on the first day of February two thousand twenty one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll move on to items from the floor. Uh, Mr. Zohorchak, were there any written in items from the floor?
I did not receive any public comment, uh, for the four P M cutoff. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Doesn't sound like it. We'll move to authorization to pay bills. Mr. O'Donnell.
Hmm, I authorize the payment of bills for goods and services received by the Borough, having been reviewed and approved by the General Government Committee from the general fund in the amount of seventy one thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and eighty nine cents, and from the sewer fund in the amount of thirty dollars, uh, for a total of seventy one thousand eight hundred and forty two dollars and eighty nine cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Mr. O'Donnell, have any comments?
Yeah, uh, just real quick, guys. Biggest expense was thirty three thousand two hundred and forty five bucks, which is a partial payment on the traffic light at Maple. Uh, eleven thousand one hundred dollars for progress on our audits. Uh, incidentally, I did speak with Mr. Bob Belikos, uh, about our audit today. They are beginning. I didn't have any special notes for them. Um, you know, Mayor Druul has done our account, our audits, uh, many years in the past. I think we have every reason to trust another successful audit this year. Uh, we paid about twelve thousand dollars for road salting related expenses, assault spreader, and bulk ice control, and finally, about five thousand five hundred bucks for the plumber, uh, who did work, I believe, in the garage in the fire department.
All right, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Uh, moving into committee action.
When you do vote on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Zohorchak, please call the roll.
Of course. Mr. Bright.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
All right.
Dr. Petrola.
Hi.
Ms. Janey.
Hi.
Mr. Wainwright.
Hi, and the motion passes. Uh, now moving into committee action, T C V cog intergovernmental agreement. Mr. Love.
I move to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Turtle Creek Valley Council of Governments to persist, participate in the T C V cog Uniform Construction Code Appeals Board.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Uh, Mr. Zohorchak, is this, um, anything different than what we've just, what we've been doing with the cog since?
Uh, no, no, this basically just allows us to continue operating, uh, and using there. So every, every community must have an appeals process for, um, appealing property maintenance code violations, uh, and rather than assembling our own, because there are so few appeals, and it makes keeping an actual appeal board nearly impossible. Utilizing the Turtle Creek cog, um, appeals board makes one for far more expeditions process. Two, actually, it should probably far more, uh, qualified individuals, because they can do a cog wide search for volunteers, um, and it, uh, it takes a lot of the, you know, responsibility of actually handling an appeals process or hearing out of our realm and hands it over to a body that is well equipped to do it. Um, and you don't have to, you know, vote against your neighbor's appeal to fix their appealing pay. So there's always that added benefit. Um, we haven't had an appeal actually since, uh, the Mary Heart process was taken through an appeal many, many years ago. Um, so like I said, this, this function is rarely, if ever utilized, but we have to have one. So this satisfies that requirement.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have a second. Mr. Zohorchak, please call the roll.
Mr. Bright.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Aye.
Dr. Petrola.
Hi.
Ms. Janey.
Hi.
And Mr. Wainwright.
Hi, and the motion passes. Uh, fire truck motion, Mr. Love.
I move to readvertise for sale a two thousand Pierce dash fire rescue engine with a minimum reserve price of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Are there any questions? I assume we're just gonna try to sell this thing again?
Yeah, the first time around, we listed the reserve price of forty thousand dollars. I didn't receive any takers on it. Um, and I would like to try to go ahead and readvertise it. Um, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We listed a thirty thousand dollars. Um, I would like to list it a reduced price to see if we can, uh, gain any traction on a sale.
Very good. Uh, if you have a second, Mr. Zohorchak, please call the roll.
Sure. Mr. Bright.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
All right.
Dr. Petrola.
Hi.
Ms. Janey.
Hi.
And Mr. Wainwright.
Hi, and the motion passes. Uh, moving into the business meeting. Um, you said we don't have a fire department report?
That is correct.
Pass that. Okay. Uh, water company report, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Water Authority Board met. Uh, was there a reorganization meeting? They kept all the same officers. There is, uh, no ALO meeting in May. That's one of the things they brought up. The other thing is they had two people speak at the meeting. One was a representative from a local service group who asked that we extend the moratorium on shut offs. The other was a landlord who asked that we terminate the moratorium on shut offs, because his tenants owed about sixteen thousand dollars worth of water bills, which he will be responsible for if they don't pay, and he said that would bankrupt them. Uh, so it's kind of a tight rope they're walking. Right now, the authority is owed about one point two million dollars in delinquent water and sewer bills. And the problem with that, again, is that the communities are still responsible for the sewer bills, even if the people never pay. So, uh, the other interesting thing was they're replacing a pump at Nadine, since they lost the bulk water sales to Monroeville Plum. The one pump is too high a capacity, so they're buying a pump with a variable drive that should, uh, enable them to pump whatever they need, but it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per pump, which is kind of expensive, but that's about the extent of my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Uh, recreation report, Mr. Zohorchak.
Sure, thank you. Um, real briefly, uh, registration for our, I guess you have virtual karate has started, uh, and is open. Um, so we're excited to have that offering in the wintertime. Just please don't kick your television. Um, and also, uh, you all should have received my email about the Easter egg hunt for the spring. Um, Easter comes rather early this year in April, so I am tentatively trying to have it at the, uh, end of March, March twenty seventh, to be precise, with a rain date of March twenty eighth. Uh, hopefully, there's not snow on the ground, but, um, I, as I mentioned in the note, we will, uh, in stagger, uh, start times and spread everybody out, have different groups, and keep people to different parts of the field to try to keep everybody away from one another as much as possible. So I, I felt pretty comfortable that we can, you know, still, uh, do that now that we, you know, really have an understanding how, uh, how the pandemic works. Um, and anyone who wants is more than welcome to come and help spread several thousand Easter eggs with many hands make like work. So I, uh, I would appreciate as many volunteers as I can get, and that is all that I have to report this evening.
Okay, um, always fun. Please show up and do that if you have time. Uh, council of government report, Mayor Wilson.
I have nothing to report, uh. I have nothing to report this time, Mr. Cog.
Okay. Um, Mr. Barry.
Mr. President, just a point of order. We skipped over the planning commission report, but that's okay, because planning commission did not meet.
Oh, apologies. Okay, um, is it Mr. Barry there?
Yes, I am. I do not have any separate report tonight, uh, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, is there any need for an executive session? Please say no.
There is no need for an executive session. I believe that we have a discussion, uh, under new business, but I believe, or my opinion is that that should be done at the public meeting.
Again, call up for the chief right now, sorry. Okay, then we'll move to the Borough Manager Report. Mr. Zohorchak.
Thank you. Uh, as Ryan alluded to, uh, the Borough's internal audit has begun. Uh, I expect to have the auditors in the office tomorrow. Um, so far, so good. Nothing, uh, you know, at all to report about that, uh, which is always good for an audit. Um, late last week, I attended an update in Alcasan on regionalization process. I don't know if any of you were able to attend the later meeting of that. I am going to be making the recording of that, uh, webinar available to all of you as soon as it's released to me. Um, so you can, you'll have, uh, time to view it. It's really only about twenty minutes of, uh, presentation on what regionalization is. I know that's a word that's been thrown around to many of you for years and years and years. Um, I think we're on our fifth or sixth version of a transfer agreement. Um, there have been numerous issues within that agreement language that have been, I believe, finally resolved. Um, and I look forward to receiving a draft of that, sharing those highlights with you in the coming months as we work towards actually resolving once and for all, uh, what the regionalization and transfer of our, uh, shared multi municipal sewers will look like, at least in round one. So just wanted to get that back on your radar, uh, coming soon. Um, but have nothing really further to report on it at this time. And that's all that I have to report tonight in my report.
All right.
This, Mr. President, Mayor Speaker. Mr. President, may I ask?
Yes, Mr. Barry.
Yes, um, on the regionalization of the sewer transfers, uh, Rob and Jason Stanton and I had a discussion about that, uh, two to, two to three months ago. Um, you know, essentially, um, Alcasan wants us to transfer the sewer lines over to Alcasan, but Edgewood would still remain responsible in the form of indemnification and in the form of, uh, assumption of liability for those sewer lines for, uh, a significant period of time, I think ten years, let's say. And, yeah, I'm, I'm still concerned that there are a lot of variables. Um, I, I believe that Edgewood has been very dutyful in, in updating and complying with the consent orders and, and doing everything it's supposed to do to make sure that our sewer system is environmentally, uh, appropriate and, and otherwise intact. Um, there are still questions concerning our sewer line. Primarily, the biggest question is our sewer line in Frick Park. Um, and, you know, my, my concern is that we transfer these sewer lines over to Alcasan, and, uh, somebody then comes around and tells us that we have to pay for a new sewer line through Frick Park, which would cost millions and millions and millions of dollars. And, and at that point, we are, uh, bound by an agreement that says that we have to pay for it. Um, and, and somebody else is doing the work, and that's what I call a blank check. Um, so I am not satisfied at this point until, um, certain issues are resolved, that Edgewood should transfer the sewer lines over to Alcasan. I think that what I'm raising tonight with Borough Council requires a discussion with representatives of Alcasan and others to make sure that we all understand what is going to happen with the Frick Park issue. That's the big issue in my mind. Um, going, briefly, going back almost twenty years ago, there was discussion that a new line would be put in, uh, in that area, and that the old line, the old Edgewood sewer line would be abandoned. The city of Pittsburgh, uh, would not go along with that, and, and I'm still not sure why, but they would not, and that never happened. You know, there's also discussion, there's also discussion about possibly, uh, combining lines with Wilkinsburg and others, and, you know, constructing a new line through Frick Park. The, the, the current Edgewood line is actually in the bed of the string. Um, so, you know, without getting into all the details and minutia of all that, I am still not satisfied. But in, in my mind, Alcasan should inspect the lines, identify what issues need to be corrected. But that isn't going to happen. The way the agreements are set up now, Alcasan is going to accept the lines, and if there's a problem with those lines for a period of, say, ten years, they will come back and charge the Borough of Edgewood, uh, for, uh, the repairs to the line. And that, I think, is highly problematic. Uh, Rob, I invite you to speak on that.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? Tim, first? Yeah. Is, is P W S A going to be part of that whole regionalization as well? Well, it's my understanding, it's my understanding that they are, but that, that's who we need to have the conversation with, uh, as well as Alcasan. That's correct, George. Because we could just tie into their twenty five manhole at that point if Alcasan is going to have the major say over both systems. Couldn't we just skip P W S A and go directly into that twenty five?
There's an issue with that. Um, the P U C now regulates P W S A. P W S A likes to hide behind the P U C, um, curtain in the sense that any change that they make to their system, they have to supposedly get approved by the P U C. Um, there, there is a question of, yeah, tying in at manhole twenty five. Um, this, the history of that is, is that essentially, um, we, Edgewood was offered the opportunity to tie in to that manhole a number of years ago that runs all the way down to Commercial Street where it ties into an officer and interceptor. Um, my understanding is, is that everything was good to go, and then for whatever reason, P W S A came back and said, oh, hey, by the way, or maybe it was the D E P came back and said, oh, hey, by the way, that existing sewer line you have, that you maintain, that runs essentially in and out of Nine Mile Run periodically, you have to basically, it, it, it fill that line with, with flowable grout so that nothing can get inside of that line, migrate laterally underground, no contaminants or pollutants or anything. And that, like, that blew the price tag from, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars to several million dollars, and that's why the project failed. Um.
Well, if, if, I could interrupt you for a second, too. The, the agreement as it went to P W S A, and Tim may remember this, was a page and a half, and when we got it back, it was seventy eight pages.
Right, right. Yeah, they, 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 they had a number of requirements that we had to meet. Um, so we are on Wednesday having a call for the, the, what's called the M forty seven sewer shed. Um, it's gonna be, you know, us, and that's, that's actually Wednesday, because we had to work around P W S A's schedule. So they are involved in a discussion that Three Rivers Water Weather is facilitating for all the Nine Mile Run communities. It includes Wilkinsburg, Swissvale, Edgewood, and P W S A to see, um, you know, what type of multi municipal cooperation can occur, um, in this sewer shed, and what projects that we, we may be able to work collectively with Alcasan funding vis a vis grow grants, um, to, to bring forth. Uh, basically, Alcasan wants the communities in the M forty seven sewer shed to work together to create projects, both capital projects and flow reduction projects. And Alcasan, if, if the flow reduction targets are met, will fund those through grow grants. Um, so tomorrow's our fir, or I'm sorry, Wednesday's our first phone call to, with all the stakeholders to really discuss, you know, what we can look at doing moving forward. I don't know if, um, because it's kind of two separate project, I don't know if tying into that sewer is going to be on the list of projects or not. Um, from that, I want to talk about what Tim had said earlier, the actual process of transfer. Um, you know, we're not looking at transfer anytime soon. I mean, we don't even have a draft agreement. Um, and the shot clock on this is very long. There are several communities that have basically already signed on the dotted line and said, here, take it. We're done. Our lines are in great shape. It's a very small segment of pipe that they're taking. They just want to get it off the radar. We're not that case. Um, we are a little bit different. Alcasan did a, what's called a deficiency reporter deficiency study on a number of lines that we targeted for regionalization. We have that information. We know what the condition of a lot of those segments are like. Included in that is the trunk line that runs all the way down Nine Mile Run. Um, that line is, it, it would need some rehabilitation for transfer. But however, we're not even sure if that line would be something that we would utilize, or if we would utilize the P W S A line. That question is yet, is, has yet to be answered. Um, there are several other projects, though, that we could exebably take on through multi municipal cooperation and also receive grow funding for the offset. Uh, so, and Alcasan has made it very clear that they certainly do not intend to just have people sign on the dotted lines of these agreements without doing their round meetings and presentations and making themselves available for other, you know, other discussion, community members. Uh, they want to be involved in the process. They, they are, you know, welcome. Once we get the agreement, once we have time to digest it, once we can solve with our engineers, and actually see what the problems are. Um, Alcasan is also more than willing to come out and talk with all the communities and say, you know, this is what we're moving forward, because they're under consent order, too. They have to get this agreement, uh, satisfy their regulatory needs. So it all sort of flows downhill. Um, you know, I would, I, I would expect that, you know, the actual final language of the contract and all of the, the, the hoops and everything that we have to go through to even begin this process, it's gonna take several months, you know, on a good day, um, before we even have language and understand what that entails. Um, beyond that, the actual rehabilitation and, and physical shovels in the grounds to make the improvements on the pipe, because we have to improve our assets to at least, um, we'll call it a B plus condition before Alcasan will even take the pipe. It's not so much, and, and Tim is right, to the extent that if they find defects that we either skipped or ignored, and we're negligent in that, then they will, if that is an option, they can perform the remediation on it and bill us back for that. Or we can make the improvement and either use, they have less bids that have contractors in place. We can, we can utilize their people, or we could do it in-house, or we could do a side bid. Um, there are a number of options. But at the end of the day, Alcasan wants honestly good B plus pipes to take over. However, we get there, there are several options for us to take. Doing it in-house, whether it's having them do it, uh, a combination of the two or whatever. So, um, I, I guess I'd look for a lot more information to come out in this. Um, I know Alcasan had said, yeah, I want to say almost a year ago, we're at this point, and we're back to that point. Um, so it, you know, timelines are still very flexible, but I feel like we may finally be getting a little bit of traction on this. Um, we can actually start to see light at the end of the tunnel and have a, a final copy of the draft, of, of the draft transfer agreement in hand review, and then decide how we want to go from there. So everything that Tim talked about is accurate. But we do not have, uh, like I said, we have our first call Wednesday to talk about uh, activity in this sewer shed, and then outside of that, we also have to look at our own works, and then what Alcasan wants us to do for regionalization. So there's a couple different balls in the air. But yeah, I'm not, obviously, no one's signing on the dotted line at the moment. I don't, I don't want to go into this, you know, gun to my head that we have to, like Tim said, you know, million dollar check to fix a line. Um, that's not how we want to play this. So we will, uh, obviously come to you when we have more information on exactly what a course of action will look like.
Rob, do you agree with what I said? That we're not even in a position to consider any agreement with Alcasan as it presently reads until these questions are answered?
I mean, they've kind of answered, I think the answers will be in the forthcoming transfer agreement. Um, I believe you were talking about the timeline and clawback for indemnity. That period has landed at twelve years. It does not seem like Alcasan is willing to budge on that. Um, and I don't believe that the municipal solicitors that have been negotiating that on everyone's behalf have agreed to that, uh, or have, have, um, gotten any more traction on that. So twelve years looks to be a point at which, you know, the look back period ends and our liability ends.
Okay, and, and given that, my, my point is that we need to have discussions and an understanding about what's gonna happen with the sewer line that runs through Frick Park before we can sign any agreement, because we need to know what we're spending. I don't want to put the Borough in a position where it signs an agreement, and then somebody tells us that we owe them billions of dollars to put a new sewer line through Frick Park. I, 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 I think that that's not, you know, that's foolish. So we, the point is, we need to have some understanding of what is going to happen with that sewer line upfront before we sign agreement. Do you agree with that?
Absolutely. But that's what we're, that's, that is exactly what we are working on.
Well, you know, I, I, I want, I want some guidance from council, because Well, you know, I want some guidance from Council because Edgewood has always cooperated completely with all the governmental agencies and cooperated with Alcasan, but I don't see how we could possibly sign this agreement until we have a clear understanding what's going to happen with that line.
I have a question. There are two lines in Frick Park. Are they going to merge them or what?
We have no idea, Jack. That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Well, you see, it's stupid to have two lines. I mean, you know, it just doubles the cost. I mean, it should have been squared away long ago.
Let's give Mr. Barry his guidance. Do we all agree that we need to, before we move forward with the process, we need to get the information that Mr. Barry needs? I think I agree. We don't want to, we're signing ourselves up for a pretty long-term deal. We need all the information. Does anyone disagree? Hearing no disagreement. Mr. Barry, you have your instructions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All right. I think we're going to move on now to some business. Does anyone have any new business?
I do, Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Just do it all.
Okay. So, guys, I'll try to go through this as quickly as I can. About two weeks ago, I approached my colleagues on the General Government Committee about the possibility of writing an ordinance to change the status of the possession of small amounts of marijuana in the Borough of Edgewood to a decriminalized status. Under the proposed legislation, and I should say, we are reviewing three ordinances, one from York, one from Harrisburg, and one from Allentown, Pennsylvania, we would be looking to change the punishment for possession of small amounts, personal amounts, personal use amounts of marijuana to be fine. This came in my mind because it's happening in more and more boroughs across the state of Pennsylvania. Indeed, decriminalization has already happened with our neighbor, the city of Pittsburgh. There is a statewide medical marijuana program currently operating. Further, it strikes me as a fundamentally hypocritical stance that one person who has a medical marijuana card and had the money to obtain it could be let off the hook for the same offense that another person who does not have that card could receive a misdemeanor penalty for. So to that end, we've discussed it in general government and have asked our solicitor to provide his input, and I also think this evening Chief Payne has come to provide us a bit of input for his thoughts on this issue. So I'd like to kick it over to the chief, if that's all right with you, Mr. President, for him to give his due sensefulness.
Very briefly, chief, what do you think?
Well, when I first was told about this, I had no qualms of most immediately saying absolutely yes, I support the idea. I've been doing this a very long time, actually 48 years, and over that period of time, I have seen such a disparity in enforcement in with small amounts of marijuana that it's just mind-boggling. It depends on, number one, what officer you may run into. You may have an officer that believes that he should be enforcing the law to the fullest extent, and so we have a young man who has a small amount of marijuana, and the next thing you know, he's being charged with a misdemeanor and ends up with a criminal history. I don't believe that's the way we should be going, especially with the understanding that legalization of marijuana is right around the corner, I believe, here for the state of Pennsylvania. I think if we would decriminalize the small amount of marijuana, it would also add to giving police officers some guidance on, you know, where they should be going. One officer may believe that a small amount of marijuana, he grabs a kid, he's got a small baggie, he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to harm this kid criminally, so he dumps it out and tells the kid, move on. Another officer may come along and say, oh, no, no, I can't just dump this out, and he ends up writing him a citation for disorderly conduct. Another officer may come along and he wants to charge him with a misdemeanor charge. So I think that this would standardize our ability to enforce a little bit better because you can't have all these officers doing something different that will get us into trouble somewhere down the line. So that is my feelings. I support Mr. O'Donnell's approach to this, and I don't have any issues as far as the decriminalization of small amounts.
Thanks, chief.
Mr. Barry?
Sorry.
Yes, Mr. President.
I know you're looking into it. I guess I'm not going to put you on the spot now, or just starting to get, considering it. I would just be curious as to the laws that make possession illegal in various amounts, are they state laws? And basically, my primary concern is, does the borough have the authority to change the, like, decriminalize what the state has made criminal?
Well, I have already, I've already looked into it, and I can speak to that issue. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the possession and use of small amounts of marijuana is a misdemeanor. The chief already said that. The three ordinances that we are looking at, all three say that so long as marijuana shall be listed as a controlled substance under state law, no person shall be in possession of a small amount of marijuana. But it grades the offense as a summary non-traffic offense for small amounts of marijuana. In my mind, that's a statement that in the Borough of Edgewood, and as the chief said, guidance to our police officers that, using their discretion, they should not charge anyone with a misdemeanor for possessing small amounts of marijuana or using small amounts of marijuana. However, a police officer could still decide in his discretion, his or her discretion, to charge under state law, because the state law is not trumped by anything that the Borough of Edgewood does, and we're still in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and our police officers are certified by MOPAC, which is the state agency. So, I mean, I'm sure the chief would agree with that. However, you know, again, it's a statement that we believe that it is unfair that somebody who has a medical marijuana card and can afford to get one, and anybody can get one if they can afford to get one, should not be charged, whereas somebody who doesn't is charged. And, you know, that becomes an enforcement issue for our police officers. They come across somebody with small amounts of marijuana and they, they are told, oh, my card's in the mail, I have an application pending, whatever. So again, I believe that this is an issue that I defer to Chief Payne on. If he's comfortable with proceeding along these lines, then I'm comfortable with it, but I do want everybody to understand that we are not usurping state law.
I think, well, it sounds like General Government will have some, they're looking at some sample ordinances, and we'll have something for our council to consider at some point in the near future. No one else has any other comments on that? Is there any other new business? All right. Hearing none.
Mr. President, could I just ask if, for the purposes of General Government, I think the committee was looking for some direction on how to proceed with this, maybe with the hopes of actually fighting out, are there any, should we, just like we did with the zoning ordinance amendment, should the committee go down the road with actually drafting ordinance, a sample ordinance? Or is this something that council does not have the appetite for at this time? And if anybody feels strongly about it, please speak.
Does anyone feel strongly against it? The majority, does the majority of council feel strongly against it? Because if not, I want to instruct them to move forward. I don't really know how I feel about it until I see some sample ordinance, because I'm not entirely sure what it is we're doing. If we're, are we passing an ordinance or are we introducing a new police procedure?
If, I mean, Mr. President, if you're looking to pass an ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, I think for the, for the benefit of council, this is something that would have to be done via an ordinance, since it would be a local law, although it does not, it does not supersede state law, it would be a local law.
I agree with that.
Well, I, okay, well, I'm not hearing any members of council jumping up and down saying no, so I would be curious to see what you come up with.
Thank you.
I'm, I am instructing General Government to do that. Does anyone else have any new business? Mr. Fuller, do you have some kind of motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Mr. Zohor, you know what? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.